Call to order, Board of Education meeting, November 19th, 2020, 7 o'clock. Lisa, take attendance.
All board members are present.
Stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Watson to give us a COVID data update.
Thank you, President Cohen. Just a second as everything loads up. So kind of like we've been doing since August of 2020, we'll continue with our Bloomfield blueprint update as far as returning to teaching and learning for the 2020-2021 school year, which we all know has been an unexpected up and down school year, to say the least. David, next slide. So the COVID update this week, there's some additional items I want to make sure I cover. And so there'll be some additional items that I'll share as we go along. Looking at the report, and this is the most recent report we've received, a couple of things you'll notice is that the numbers continue to go up. That's no surprise, we all watch the news, these are all things we know. I know that as far as confirmed or probable, the last report had 5,905. This week, we're at 8,500. Another big change has been the percent positive. We're at almost 42% with the seven day moving average. Some of the trends to also pay attention to is if you look at the different age groups, we'll see in the age group 5 through 9 and 10 through 12, they're still increasing, but at a much smaller margin than the 14 to 18. And really, the 19 to 59 group continues to explode. It continues to go higher and higher and higher. So a couple of other things with the report. And I had my weekly conference call with the Oakland County Health Department today. One, depending on the testing site, it can be up to three to four days now for people to get test results. So that is a huge concern. Contact tracing has also become an issue. We received an email probably about a week ago from the Oakland County Health Department asking us to take on a big part, if not all, of contact tracing. That was brought up on our call with the Oakland County Health Department today. And they said that they're looking to reallocate their resources so that they can better serve schools as needed. Part of the big problem with that is, you know, when we're in person, we're all trying to make decisions as far as who has COVID, who doesn't have COVID, who's getting a test, who's not getting a test. So I'm looking forward to an update from them to see if they're able to reallocate their resources. Because it'll be quite challenging for us if we're expected to do all the contact tracing. We're waiting three to four days to find out whether or not someone is COVID positive or just getting that information. Next slide. This is a new one, and we'll be reporting on this as well. The state hospitalization trends across the state of Michigan. We've always said that as we look at the metrics and things like that, that it would be multifactorial. This is one that we'll be paying more close attention to. And it kind of shows us the trend and where it's moving. You know, this is one of the indicators that the state looks at as they make their decisions as well. So it's a trend that we want to keep an eye on. The green represents patients that are not in critical care. The yellow represents patients that are on ventilators. And then the red represents patients that are in critical conditions. Next slide. This one has a lot of meaning to me, other than what most people probably see at home right now is just numbers. And to me, other than the obvious, we know we're in a pandemic, we know the cases have gone up. But the October 8th date is something that's really important. The October 8th date is when I gave a board presentation as we were looking at ways to bring every single person back five days a week under a model that would keep our specialists hybrid, but have more students back in the building. During that presentation, we were about 45,000 cases per day on a seven day average in the United States. I also talked about how there was a staffing issue at that time. And thank you for some of the community members that did sign up to be subs. That was great, appreciate it. Can't wait to actually have the opportunity to be back in person so you can be in the building with the students. And then we kind of fast forward to November 2nd. On November 2nd, we had to close Bloomfield Hills High School. We had to close Bloomfield Hills High School because there were so many people in quarantine who ran out of staff. We know that we went distance roughly a day after or shortly after because of the case count and because of where we're at with the number of percent positive. But the story that wasn't told was where we were at for the elementary levels. We were on the verge of having to shut the elementary levels because of staffing as well. Now, when you look at the numbers then, between October 8th, November 2nd, and then today, at over 160,000, staffing is even more of a concern. And it's not just us, I know on the superintendent call today, everyone is having staffing issues. So, you know, what is the answer? The answer is, we're going to need many more people. The answer is, we're going to need Oakland County Health Division to be able to do that contact tracing. We're going to need tests to not be three to four days to get that information. So I know it's a capacity issue for them, but we need the Health Department to continue to be a good partner and step up and do a little bit more. We've also raised our subpay, so it's about a 30% increase in that. I think it's not going to do much because a lot of people don't want to sub. Especially as the numbers have gone up, more and more people have decided not to sub. Next slide. A new app that's out there that I would encourage everyone to sign up for is the M.I.CO alert. It allows you to get updates on where there might be an outbreak in your area. I don't know how good this is, I haven't seen any data on it, but it's yet another source or ability for us to stay connected and find out what's going on and receive an alert. Also, going back to Oakland County Health Department Division with my meeting with them today, they did say that their main site, they're not at full capacity for testing. But it seems like all the urgent cares and all the other hospitals and things like that have reached capacity when it comes to testing. So if you are looking to go and get tested, please visit the main Oakland County site because as of 3:30 this afternoon, they still have capacity. Next slide. We can kind of see where we've gone in a short period of time when it comes to case count as far as the seven day moving average with a three day lag. We can also see where we've gone to percent positive with the seven day average, moving average with a three day lag. There was some potentially good news today. We see that the cases were a little lower today than they have been in the past. And we also see the percent positive might be starting to flatten out. Next slide. So we're still making sure, as part of the state mandate, that we're reporting on our homepage the currentness when it comes to real time COVID-19 information. So for those that test positive, those that test probable. While we're in distance, instead of sending a letter every day, we will send that letter on Friday at the end of the week, so it will still be very transparent. But the day we're officially notified, it goes into this system. We're not sure of the lag right now, again because of the capacity of Oakland County Health Department, but we have another meeting coming on with them shortly where hopefully we'll get more information about where they're at. Next slide. We're also participating with Oakland County Health Division as far as their school evaluation program. We want to make sure that our mitigation, you know, the things we're doing to mitigate exposure to COVID-19 are where they need to be. So the different categories, and they're all weighted. One is personal protection equipment, which is weighted at 15%. Spacing, movement, and access at 15%. Hygiene, do we teach the students how to wash their hands? Are we giving them opportunities to wash their hands? We have hand sanitizer, do they know how to use that properly? That's 11%. Screening students and staff, 10%. Busing and student transportation, 10%. And some cleaning, food service gathering, extracurricular activities. Have we implemented all the Michigan High School Athletic Association and Michigan Department of Health and Human Services protocols and done it with fidelity? Testing protocols for students and staff and responding to positive cases, that's 8%. Cleaning athletics, medically vulnerable students and staff, responding to positive tests amongst staff and students. So the total that you can earn is 100%. We're hopeful to get our score next week, if not right after Thanksgiving. In order to pass, you need 80%. We want to get 100%, that's our goal. Because we want to assure everyone when we come back that we are doing everything we can to make sure everyone is safe, not just in school, but they've learned the things that are going to help them keep safe when they go out of school and go in the community as well. As soon as we have that final evaluation, I will share that with the board and with the community. Next slide. So some of the next steps, at our next board meeting right after break, will be an update on our metrics. You know, we go back to August 20th, right? So as part of our August 20th presentation, I mentioned that date a lot. We, you know, we adapted the Harvard model. We looked at the red, the orange, the yellow, and green. And the goal is to inform our decisions to open as a whole. Do we open remotely? Do we open hybrid? Or do we go in person? And as the COVID-19 pandemic has evolved, the more guidance has been provided by local health authorities, we'll continue to adjust and improve on this process. I'll also have another update on our return to in-person learning. I do want to address a couple of things as far as next steps. One, like everyone else, I tuned in to watch the governor give her presentation with members of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. During that time, she closed the high schools, athletics, and extracurricular activities. She also talked about K through 8 and reminded everyone that's a local decision. This was nothing new. There were, this wasn't new guidance. This is the same thing we've been operating since we came out or she came out with the Return to Learn Plan, that we should prioritize the younger students first. And as part of our phase in process, we've always prioritized our special education students, our younger students first, and we'll continue to do so. As far as guidance, I'm still looking for real guidance. It troubles me when I think about the fact that as a school district, and we don't want to be public health officials, and we're not trying to be, that on August 20th, we presented about the Harvard metrics and how we were going to adapt them. Keep in mind, this came out before the CDC released their color chart. This came out well before the Oakland County Health Division released their chart, which they still can't answer clarifying questions on. So you've got superintendents around the state trying to adapt it and change it. When I look throughout Michigan and I talk to fellow colleagues, what are you doing? We're doing this, we're doing that. That's not guidance. When I look at the state of Oregon and you look at their webpage, you see guidance. It says, this is what we're doing as a state. Here's how you break it down by your county. Here are the rules we're going to follow as public health people. We're telling you, this is the best thing to do. So I wonder, and I am frustrated, how is that possible? How is it possible we come up with something before the Oakland County Health Division? How is it possible we come out with something before the CDC? How is it possible you look at so many school districts in the state of Michigan right next door to us, and they're all doing different things? Guidance doesn't lead to that. So to say I was disappointed in that meeting, yeah, I was disappointed. I wanted to hear, this is what we're doing from a health standpoint. This is what you need to do. These are the things that are the most important factors for you to look at. Until then, when we get to the next board meeting, we will have reviewed our metrics. One thing that I did glean from the presentation was that the governor and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, they looked at targeted restrictions. Her goal wasn't just, I'm going to shut everything down, everything shut. She looked at data, they looked at data, and said, here's where we're going to restrict based on the data. It's not just, we're done, that's it. So I thought that was beneficial. Next slide. That's the end of the COVID update, President Cohen.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Pat, for the thorough discussion. Does anyone have any questions? Actually, if you could just take off the slide so I can see people or they could put, they have a question in the chat. I don't see any hands raised, so I'll go to the president's report. Thanks again, Pat, you know, for all the stuff that you're doing. Quick president's report. So as we head into Thanksgiving, we have a lot to be thankful for as a community. First, we are thankful for our students who continue to show resiliency and think of others during these times. Whether it's students creating free STEM classes for our second through 12th graders, or students arranging for Thanksgiving food for our greater community, or students just helping other students deal with their medical health concerns. Students continue to show empathy for all and lead by example. We are also thankful for our superintendent has brought a team which includes his administrators and staff throughout the district working around the clock to find ways to get all of our students the best education in the safest way possible. Finally, we all want to thank our community who continue to also show the passion that makes this community one of the best in the country. Getting hundreds and hundreds of emails and all the public comments shows how our community has passionate people and students who value education both inside and outside the classroom. We are all proud to live and work in Bloomfield Hills, one of the best communities, as I said, in the country. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Pat?
Thank you, President Cohen. So each month as a school district, we have a social, emotional learning theme. Last month, it was feelings. And I think it's fair to say, I've had a lot of feelings in the past couple of months. This month, it's gratitude. And I do want to take a moment to really talk about some things that, and I won't just speak for myself, but the Board of Education and I, we would like to express our gratitude to the individuals who make Bloomfield Hills Schools so special. So I'd like to start first by the students. Like President Cohen said, supporting each other, supporting our local community. I had the honor and the privilege last week to sit in a meeting with students who gave a presentation. It was phenomenal to see them share what they were passionate about, to hear how they felt that they could help move the district forward, to see their creativity, to see how respectful they were, to see how just innovative and thoughtful. It was the highlight of probably my month was talking to those students. It was unbelievable, and I know a couple of other people on this call were in there as well. And it just, it made me feel good. Not just because I know that they're going to have great careers and pay my social security, which is just an added bonus on a side note, but the fact that these are Bloomfield Hills School students. This is, this is the result of a great education, a great community, of great parents. Also thankful for our teachers and our support staff for their tireless work. I think what's lost with teaching is that people don't understand, one of the most difficult parts is planning. If you're going to be a great teacher, it takes forever to plan. That is one of the most difficult things. And we continue to ask them, plan for in-person, plan for at-home, plan to do it concurrent. You're going to have people, you know, in your classroom, you're going to have people at home. You might have two people in the hall, you might be watching the class next door. It's like, just teach with your hair on fire. And they've done it, and the support staff has been there all the way. I'd like to thank our district and building administrators, the central office support staff. You know, working with administrators, they get to know me. It's been difficult because under COVID, we're constantly changing. We literally have...
We lost Pat for a second.
Hour later.
Maybe this weekend. All right, Pat's there.
All right, good. I'd also like to thank our families, parents, guardians, grandparents, all that are helping support their students in distant learning. I'd like to thank our district vendors, Airmark, and EnviroClean for everything they're doing. I'd like to thank our health and education partners who continue to collaborate with us. Technology has shrunk the world. I'd like to thank our international partners in Japan, South Korea, Israel, Denmark for sharing all the insights. I'd like to thank all the different school districts in Michigan and those out of state that continue to collaborate with us as well. And I'd like to thank our local community and taxpayers who continue to support our wonderful district. We do have an extremely bright future. These times are beyond difficult. Everyone on this call, everyone who's going to watch this video, is frustrated. I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated as a parent, I'm frustrated as a leader, I'm just frustrated. So I get that, and I'm not going to sit here and pretend I have all the answers because I don't. But what I can say is we'll continue to work as hard as we can to make sure we provide the best opportunities for our students and look to find ways to bring everyone back safely as best we can. Thank you, President Cohen.
Thank you, Superintendent Watson. That was great. And I'm sure that, you know, I reiterate, and the entire board agrees with every one of your comments. With that, we will go to consent agenda. Lisa?
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from a regular board meeting of October 22nd. Request to approve minutes from a study session of November 4th. Request to approve minutes of a closed session on November 4th. Request to approve minutes from a special emergency meeting of November 6th. Request to approve financial, monthly financial reports as attached. Request to approve disbursement reports as attached. Request to approve HR actions as attached. And the resolution approving and authorizing an amendment to the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund project amendment for the nature center as attached.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Cynthia, do you have some comments to make on, or we have opened up for discussion?
Thank you, President Cohen. Yes, thank you. I would like to comment about two items on tonight's consent agenda. First is regarding our, some of our HR actions this evening. And I'd like to speak to some of those folks whose resignations we are accepting this evening. First, I'd like to speak about Joyce Carmouch. She is one of those people who today we call heroes, but I've always called angels. She has been an occupational therapist at Wing Lake for 31 years. And she's worked miracles with some of our most highly challenged students for a long time, and she deserves a great rest. And we are great thanks for all of the work that she's done to support students in our district for 31 years. Next, I'd like to talk about Shira Good. Shira brought to Bloomfield Hills an amazing effort that, leading us in institution of service standards across our district. She helped us all learn how to have a mindset and establish standards in each of the areas of our district, from food service and custodial to bus drivers, to our building secretaries, and every one of us involved in serving our community, our parents, our students, each other. And it was a wonderful effort. She has led us in helping to communicate with our media, with our families, with our students on a myriad of issues over the course of the years. And I can't thank her enough for her great work with us. And she's been a wonderful leader in that area. Next, I'd also like to speak about Kelly Bowe. Kelly's only been with us for a couple of years, but in her short time with us, she has helped us as we've transitioned between superintendents, as we created our new strategic plan, and led us through a very difficult time supporting our staff in COVID over the last year most especially. She's going to a great new opportunity, and I will certainly, I know everyone will surely miss her. She had big shoes to fill when Chris Barnett left us. And she's really helped us, guided through readdressing all of our policies. And we will miss her dearly and wish her great success wherever she's going. And then finally, I'd like to make comments about my friend and neighbor, Brian Goby. I've enjoyed working with him since 2006. He has led this district as we, as closed buildings and built building, built our new high school, and so many other important things that we have done and moved students safely from building to building to building and building in transitions. And he deserves not to have to be driving around our district at 3 or 4 o'clock in the morning on a snowy night to find out whether the roads are safe enough for our students and our bus drivers to be out on the roads and to help our superintendents know whether schools should open or close. And he doesn't, won't need to be worried about whether the power is going out in one of our buildings in the course of a weekend, or a flood, or a million other things that he has helped us through over the course of the years. But he's not going very far away. He's going to be helping and working with Barton Mella as a project manager to help us as we work on all of the built projects for the using of our new bond proposal that has, our community has approved. So I want to wish all of them the very best in the next phase of their lives and thank them for all the things that they have done for our community for so many years. The other item I'd like to speak about tonight is about the nature center agreement that we are approving tonight. As I read through all the materials in preparation for tonight's meeting, like on page 83 of our packet or something like that, is the resolution of the Board of Education authorizing the acceptance of the development project agreement with the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund from December 14th, 2004. I was board president at that time. It was immediately following a contentious board election. And it was a divided vote to make the decision to accept this grant from the DNR that would establish our nature center in perpetuity as we accepted the money to build the wonderful building that is now there. Before that, they were operating out of it, falling apart, old trailer. Tonight, we are expanding the acreage of our nature center in perpetuity. We are working again with the DNR. And this is expanding a resource for all of our children and our community in perpetuity. And I take great pride in being part of the effort to make sure that this is, this resource is preserved for our community into the future. I really want to thank Attorney Rick Sunquist and Rob Glass for their leadership as we tried to work out an agreement. I want to thank the developer, Terry Knowson, who worked with us, and Bloomfield Township. It was a, it was a difficult twist and turn as we came to the decision on being able to acquire these additional acres. And I'm very proud of the work that the district is doing. And tonight is the, is the final phase of this, and I'm very happy to have an opportunity to be part of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Cynthia. Howard?
Thank you, President Cohen. I would like to echo a lot of the things that Vice President Vanoyen was just expressing related to the, to the leaving from our district, three wonderful, wonderful people. Shira Good, I'm showing my age right now. I was part of the hiring committee of Shira back in 2011. Shira has been a wonderful asset to our district, bringing us into the 21st century on our webpages, our social media interactions. So thank you, thank you, Shira, for all the good work you've done over the last eight years. You'll be missed. You'll be missed. Um, Kelly Bowle, um, again, as, uh, Vice President Vanoyen said, has only been with us for a few years, but Kelly has very definitely made a mark on this district, um, helping us, uh, make a whole transition in our policy manual, which is, um, the people in the public really don't realize, but that was a Herculean effort that we, uh, we as a district had to go through. So thank you for, Kelly, for that, plus working with us on, um, on diversity of our workforce. Uh, Kelly has made a wonderful, uh, dent in bringing more, um, a diverse workforce into our, uh, district. It's a, it's a long road that we need to continue to work on over the many years in the future, but, uh, Kelly has great, shown great leadership in making, uh, efforts to, uh, help us have our, our workforce look like our student body and our community. And, um, Mr. Goby, who, um, has been so great in terms of bringing, uh, all the redist, all the, not redistricting, but all the downsizing that our district has had to go through as our student populations have shrunk over the last many years. So, um, bringing up, doing, doing not only smaller projects such as, uh, bringing the Doyle Center, um, into, uh, the ability to have all of our, uh, or the vast majority of our administrative staff in the, the Doyle Center to, um, all the remodeling of all the buildings that have been going on bit by bit to, uh, make sure that our, uh, students are safe, warm and dry. But also, uh, the crowning effort was the, the, the new high school that, um, he shepherded through from, uh, beginning to end with the, uh, opening of that building and the ribbon cutting in, uh, this, in the fall of 2015. Uh, also the, uh, major push to help us, uh, uh, formulate the bond, the $200 million bond and, uh, what we are, uh, going to endeavor to work on over the next, uh, five to six years as we, uh, thank the community for all the, this large S to pass the bond in August and, uh, the, uh, total transformation of the district that we will be going through, uh, not only for phase one, which, uh, launches in the, uh, fall of 2023, but all the other things that we'll do through 2026. That project would not have come about without, uh, Brian Goby's leadership. And I really, really want to thank him for all the things that he's done with his district. And I hope he enjoys his retirement. Um, um, retirement is a wonderful thing as I experienced eight years ago and, or 10 years ago, I should say. So enjoy your retirement, Mr. Goby, and we will miss you terribly.
Thanks, Howard. Anyone else? With that, we'll vote on consent. Mark?
If I thought voting no might keep some of the reckon, resignations from happening, I would vote no on the consent agenda tonight. I echo everything that Howard said and Cynthia said, um, but because of no vote, won't accomplish, uh, what I would like to accomplish on my votes, yes.
Thanks, Mark. Jennifer?
Um, right on, Mark. Uh, I would like to say things, but there's nothing I could say that would be better than what Cynthia and Howard said. So, um, God bless you guys and thank you for everything you have done for all the students and families of this district. I vote yes on the consent agenda.
Lisa?
Um, I also vote yes and want to echo my colleagues in expressing gratitude for all of the work, um, as a parent in this district for almost 20 years. Um, uh, the gratitude runs very deep, uh, uh, to all of our departing staff. You'll really be missed.
Howard?
I think Mark had a wonderful idea. I vote no.
Jackie?
I also want to say thank you to everyone. And it's just been a pleasure working with you the last 10 years. And, uh, I appreciate everything that you've done. It's been an honor. I vote yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes six out. Thank you very much Cynthia, Howard and everyone for the kind words.
Uh, uh, six, six one, sir. Six one.
Six one, yes. Um, okay, we will go to general discussion. Report of FFLA. So FFLA, um, met as a committee on November 4th. Um, we discussed amongst other things, um, related to the bond program, financial reporting content and the form, and the format of the sale of the bonds, the overall timeline of the construction, along with detail of what properties we worked on and during what timeline. Additional support considerations were discussed and continued to reviewed, reviewed, including the possibility of using an owner's rep to help support the district. And we discussed the maintenance and robotics updates on their transition out of Loser as we begin work on the Loser property. Administration also provided a recommendation regarding substitute pay raises. Administration also shared an update regarding the attendance boundary work that will be commencing shortly, including engaging Paul Wills and Plant Moran Cressa to support, facilitate the group's efforts. Administration also provided a sinking fund project update recommending the completion of the renovation of booth in the reading recovery area. This will also facilitate setting up a pilot room for technology and furniture related for the bond. Administration also discussed a recommended, a recommended board resolution that finalizes as we disturbed the nature center land addition boundary and description to be filled with the Department of Natural Resources. Administration also provided an update on strategic goal three specifically related to the board's resolution to eradicate racism and to create more equitable, inclusive schools for all children's, which we acknowledge is ongoing work. Any questions or comments? Howard?
Um, everything you reported is, is correct as of the last FFLA date, but, um, subsequent to that, um, we received the, um, retirement notification from Mr. Goby. Given that, I really think that we should, uh, continue our efforts that, uh, you mentioned from, um, uh, Paul Wills, that we investigate doing an RFP on having an owner's rep, uh, representing the board and the organization for the, um, uh, for the bond. Uh, this will require an, an RFP and to get some quotes, but I think this is something that we very definitely as a board, whether it's this board or we, uh, if it, uh, if the timing, uh, drifts into January in the new board. But I very definitely think that, um, we should, uh, redouble our efforts given the retirement of Mr. Goby and the wonderful leadership that he's provided on the bond, that we really need, um, someone on our side of the, uh, of the board and the district to really, uh, review and, and assist us to, uh, make sure that we deliver the bond on time and within budget.
Thanks, Howard. Any other comments? Okay, with that, uh, Lisa, uh, report on the bond of the board policy committee?
Thanks, Paul. I really don't have a report because, um, we pushed the vote, um, to amend or, sorry, clarify student intern policy to the study session. So I, I did the committee report then and we haven't met since.
That's fine. Okay. With that, we will go to Superintendent Watson for an update on our extended continuity of learning plan.
Thank you, President Cohen. One second. So as we do every month as required by the state of Michigan, I'm asking the board to once again approve our extended continuity of learning plan as we have in past board meetings.
Is that, is there a presentation or just, um?
There, there, no, there's no, there's no presentation. This is what we have to do by the state every month. We need to ratify it every month, but there's no presentation for it.
Okay. Thanks, uh, thanks Superintendent Watson. With that, we will move to public comment. Dave, do we have anyone who would like to make a live public comment?
Yeah, it does not look like they have called in yet, so we can move to the read. And if they call in, we'll do that. Let me just share my screen real quick.
President Cohen, I've got the three minute timer.
Okay.
Second here. Hang on a second. There we go.
Um, okay, the first two, okay. Uh, first one, my name is Nora and I'm a fourth grader at Conan. My neighbor Fran Annalee's go, can go to school at Cranbrook, but I can't go to school at Conan. She even gets recess with her friends. It is not fair. First and foremost, I would like to thank you for the time you have spent navigating this very difficult and challenging situation. I'm writing to make several urgent requests. First, I implore the administration, review efforts, deliver a full-time face-to-face plan for our K through five students starting no later than second semester and to offer a way for quarantining students to participate remotely. Second, the school administration board needs to align on metrics that do not necessarily penalize our children by stripping them of the option for a safe and effective learning environment. The district needs to align the metrics to take on, to take onus off the board and put the responsibility on public healthcare professionals such as Oakland County Health Department. Lastly, I urge the administration to study the Northville Public School District as a model that a district could emulate to find the right balance between the right for our children to have an effective education, the safety of our community within which we live. Northville School District as of today, November 19th, 2020, still offering full-time face-to-face school for its K through five students and hybrid for middle school students. I'm very pleased with the, uh, I'm very pleased with the governor's address recently. She and the health department were obviously educated with the latest data regarding children, COVID-19 and in-person schooling. This is data, this is data is what Pat Watson, the parents enrolled in the remote hybrid teaching model have been communicating to the board of ed for weeks now unsuccessfully. I really hope that the board of ed would consider to go back in-person school now that the same message had been communicated by the governor, local health department and CDC. Keeping kids out of school if they choose in-person learning is harmful for their mental health, their academics, and for many kids, their safety. I think the board of education is not understanding that there are huge societal impacts of this. Keeping kids out of school is harmful to the community's workforce and has and will set back all working mothers, single parents and families that have children with disabilities. The ramifications of this will affect our children, communities, families and workforce for years to come. Stop making decisions on the latest science, data and facts, not out of fear and what the meat, and what's in the media. I challenge Bloomfield Board of Education to be a leader for other school districts and use information to make the right choice for our children and community and not a follower that makes choices based on decisions of other school districts. We must think of others, be leaders for the underprivileged communities and set the tone for change. The impacts of our underprivileged neighboring communities will be detrimental. This will increase dropout rate for older children and put younger children at risk to being left home alone while their parents were at work. What will happen to their futures? Pontiac schools are closely monitoring Bloomfield and their other neighboring communities even more. We must do this for our children as well as them. The teachers have the units to represent their best interest. It is your job to advocate for our children and their best interest. Urges you to strongly consider our own local government stance and think about the ramification of trickle-down effects of your decision on the community and the future of the kids. Please do what is right, bring our kids back to in-school learning. Dr. Russell? All right, we'll get there. Dr. Russell Faust, Oakland County Medical Director quoted in the Birmingham eccentric. The bottom line is there is little to no transmission within schools, no evidence of ongoing transmission. Schools are the safest place for our kids right now. The data refutes the notion that children are super-spreaders in schools. It is not, it is clear they are not. Please consider reopening schools for in-person instructions. If you continue to remain in in-distance learning, you are further encouraging families who are on the fence to leave for private schools and pushing families who have already left to stay in private. Our kids are suffering, our community is suffering, families are suffering. Your decisions to force virtual school for the entire district is unconscionable. We deserve a voice and deserve a choice. Bloomfield's forced virtual is not working. Earlier this evening, Dr. Robert Ranfield, Director of Center for Disease Control Prevention, also known as the CDZ, spoke at the COVID-19 press conference. I want to quote several things he said. We need to follow the data. We should be making data-driven decisions when we talk about what we're doing about institutions. This is extensive data to confirm that K through 12 schools can open with face-to-face learning and they can do it safely and do it responsibly. The infections that we've identified in schools, when they have been identified, were not acquired in schools. The truth is for kids K through 12, one of the safest places they can, can be from our perspective is to remain in school. It is really important that following the data, making sure we don't make emotion, emotional decisions and what to close and what not to close. I'm here to say clearly the data strongly supports that K through 12 schools, as well as institutes of higher learning, really are not where we are having our challenges. It would be counterproductive if there were an emotional response to say, let's close the schools. Please be leaders, please be leaders in our, in our country to follow the CDC guidelines, follow the data. The country, the county has not closed K through eight, the state has not closed K through eight, and the CDC has not advocated to, to close K through eight or any schools for this matter. Our children are suffering and falling behind. They should be in school or at least have the option to be in school face-to-face while being safe and cautious. And they were, as it was seen by, by the low incidence in our K through five buildings during hybrid learning. They should not be following a random metric card that does not follow the data. Thank you for your time. I'd like to share community, I'd like to, I'd like to share commentary from Dr. Yuzi, the, the chief contributor to the Harvard model and leading voice in guiding the country through the pandemic. He spoke about Michigan's latest partial shutdown and shortly after it was announced. Michigan, a model of what states are doing. Limited indoor gatherings, keep outdoor stuff open, keep K through eight schools in person if possible, push testing. Will this be enough? Don't know, but these are important steps. And right now, we need to be more aggressive, not less. Michigan is not pausing outdoor gatherings, essential workplaces, and most critically, they are not pausing K through eight in-person schools as have ramped up testing one of the highest levels in the country. End of statement. Oakland County Health Department provided data Monday on 100,000 of positive cases for school faculty and students and found just four cases between September, November 2nd, the result of spread within school. This is a testament of the amazing efforts that the school board and those around Oakland County have done to ensure our schools are as safe as possible. The detriment, detrimentation not to know or to look away when the facts assail our beliefs is an enduring fertility of human nature. The tendency toward group think and confirmation bias and the will to affirm the scientific consensus and marginalized skeptics are ripened consideration by the so-called experts committed to advocating their favorite cause.
Okay, that's it, Paul.
That's it? Is anyone in the meeting?
Sean, do we have anybody join?
Uh, no, we don't have any.
Okay, so that is the end of public comment.
Thank you, Dave. With that, we will go to board business recon, reconfirmation of the extended continuity of learning plan. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education reconfirm the Bloomfield Hills Schools' extended continuity of learning plan as presented by the administration and approved on September 24, 2020.
Do I support?
Support.
Okay. Jennifer, uh, discussion, I'm sorry, discussion? Okay, no discussion? Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Okay, Jackie? Oh, no, I did Jackie. I don't think I missed anyone, right?
Yeah, you missed me. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, you read it. Mark? I assume Mark's a yes. Um, I'm a yes. Motion passes seven oh. Item 8B, approval of unified pay rates. I get a motion?
I move that the unaffiliated staff, staff not covered by collective bargaining agreement, receive the salary adjustments outlined in the background information in this memorandum.
Second.
Thanks, second by Jackie. Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Um, Paul, Paul, are we going to get a presentation by, um, Assistant Superintendent Bowle on this? Are any of these?
I believe she presented to us, I believe she presented to us before. I don't know. Kelly, did you have anything to add?
I didn't, but I'm available to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, I didn't know whether we needed a presentation or not. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mark was a yes. Uh, Cynthia?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Lisa, Lisa?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Any ads? Motion passes seven oh. Uh, see ratification of BH- Any ads? Motion passes 7-0. See ratification of BH AIA contract modification. Can I get a motion?
I move that the letter of agreement with the Bloomfield Hills Association of Instructional Assistance located at Wing Lake be approved as presented.
Second.
Any discretion? Thank you. Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion passes 7-0. Board Business D, ratification of AFSCME contract modification. Can I get a motion?
I move that the letter agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees be approved as presented.
Do I have support?
Support.
Or from Cynthia? Any discretion? Okay, Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
I, I'm a yes. Motion passes 7-0. And then finally, 8E, approval of amendments to regular board meeting schedule for the 2020-21 year. Can I get a motion?
I move the December study session be rescheduled to Wednesday, December 2, from its originally scheduled date of Thursday, December 3, and that the revised calendar be approved as presented.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discretion? Okay. Jennifer?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion passes 7-0, and I will call for adjournment. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.